I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you could all stand and say the pledge.
Pledge of limitations to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Okay. Ms. Zesinski, do we have any visitors wishing to speak?
We do not.
Okay. And we do not have any written correspondence, so in that case, we can move on to our report of board and committees. Ms. Arrington, do you have a report about the professional learning?
Yes, the professional learning committee met. And again, the whole purpose of it is to basically analyze the data and what is going on in our district with our, with the students, and then try to develop a plan for what would be best to present to our teachers. And it was very interesting, a lot of great discussion. I think this far as, as we wanted, because there's just so much good discussion about it. But it's very interesting, and they're having a meeting anyway.
Well, I'm sorry, like, so what is it again? I would, I'm, I'm, I didn't.
It is for developing a plan for professional development.
Oh, okay.
But it's, but it's also, it's based on using the, for instance, the data that was shown was how many of our students come from economically challenged families. And therefore, is that going to determine how we
Move forward with their professional.
Right, with additional professional development or change professional development.
Okay.
But I think the committee is required by NICED, and the membership is pretty well prescribed of who they want on there. And the professional learning plan comes to the board for approval, I think every two years?
Yeah.
Or every year?
July.
Every year, if it reorgs meaning to do it.
Yeah.
So yeah, July, we have to, have the plan for it to be approved by July.
Yeah.
I do have a safety committee meeting update. The safety committee met on November 12th, and it had a lot of, we had a lot of updates because this was our first meeting of the school year. The meeting opened with Mr. Bellisle reviewing the process of reporting for workplace violence. And then Mr. Rumpato was able to provide an update on the capital improvement project. He also shared some results of the recent fire inspection. And because of that, we're working on standardizing visuals for each classroom for evacuation pathways. And then Mr. Bellisle reviewed some new procedures for their formalized threat assessment process. And that is going to be part of the instructional support team at each building. He then went on to, a lot of, he went on to report that he worked with a team of administrators over the summer to create a protocol and some procedures surrounding the reunification process in case of emergency. And then there is an updated requirement for the cardiac plan that's going to be in place by January 2026. And because of that, we need to have a new public hearing and a new public comment period, and that's going to take place in early December. And finally, the majority of the meeting was spent discussing some safety assessments of all of our buildings and how we need to update those. So that was the conclusion of the meeting. And does anybody have any questions?
Is, is the water, lead, water testing, is that part of the safety? Or no, committee thing? No?
No, it doesn't.
It's a mandate, yeah, it's a mandate that we take care of, but there's not really much for them to weigh in on, I guess.
Yeah.
It's pretty straightforward about what we have to do and how we have to remediate and whatnot.
And we do have the wellness committee, Ms. Metzen?
Yeah, out of the press that we met yesterday. And our work is really about how we can further advance wellness to the overall health of students, families, and employees throughout the district. And yesterday, it was really just a big brainstorming session. So we broke up into subcommittees, and we continued to do work on ironing out the framework for what we want that to look like. So we looked at mental, physical, and nutritional wellness categories, again, for students, families, and employees, and what we kind of wanted that to look like. So like I said, we broke out into groups, and we presented to the larger group. Nothing really final yet, but we did come up with a product that we can present to the administrative team, make sure it aligns to the strategic, strategic plan. And then we'll kind of take some next steps in our future meeting.
Is that a relatively new commitment for us?
Um, over the past couple of years, it was. Yes.
Definitely post-COVID, from what I know, but yes.
Thank you.
I think it's driven by our policy.
Yeah, it was in place just before COVID. It changed a bit because during that time, we wanted to look at SCL and focus during COVID. So we brought it back to life again. But it did exist for a short period of time, then COVID sort of changed course a little bit. And now it's come back and been revived. So it's, it's, yeah.
So Mr. Croft and I went to the ECASB Legislative Forum, and it was a really good session where ECASB had a few presentations to the group of assembly people who had come and staff members. Talked a lot about foundation aid, you know, predictable and stable foundation aid funding and preserving safe harmless. Talked about getting investments into mental health supports, raising the annual capital project amount from $100,000 to $150,000. So there were a few different topics that were kind of generally put out to the group. And then we were able to sit with our assembly people and, and, you know, within our little districts. So, you know, Mr. Croft and I sat with Karen McMahon and were able to talk a little bit about, you know, how we felt about some of those things. And she talked a little bit about, you know, some of the things that she is, you know, looking to accomplish over the legislative session as well. So it was a really nice, nice event. It was well attended.
Yeah, it was a good format, that was.
It was, it was nice, yeah, to really be able to connect. So it was really just us and Williamsville sitting with Karen McMahon. So it was, you know, really nice face time.
And you could go every 15, you could go and sit with another legislator. I sat with, now I'm going to forget his name, the one, it was Bill Conrad.
Bill Conrad?
Yeah.
But he wasn't there, but his representative, Evan, was there. And so, I thought, okay, tell, talk to him too, because he's in the legislature too.
Yeah, and I talked with Rivera, the one who is like, is running to replace John Ryan, who's our senator. So, you know, he is being challenged by someone else, but he's looking to, to get involved. And he would be our representative in that spot. So it was interesting to speak with him.
That was the dessert forum.
Mm-hmm.
Are you planning on doing a few more of those, or is that?
So there will be another legislative event, usually like January, February time. And then there's the day in Albany. So there's, you know, definitely some other legislative activities that'll be going on. Mr. Croft will be going to them.
This last year was, they did a legislative breakfast on a Saturday morning. And this time, they tried to do this new forum, like, this new forum that, of the dessert. I think the dessert worked better.
Well, I think the, the breakfast really was a lot more of just everybody talking to the legislators. And now this time, being able to speak in your little groups and talk about your own specific district needs.
I think that was good. They seemed receptive.
Thank you for attending. Miss, you had a good representation for Amherst.
And there was a tech meeting today, too. So I'm going to say something, so Amy, you can jump in there and find out what happened there, I was trying to. So for those new members of the board, so the tech committee, and it's like, just serves as this kind of input from building tech committees to know what their needs are, so they can funnel mostly a lot of professional development, proper professional development to those teachers, and also then to give information from, you know, material information down, and also go back both ways. So we're in the second year of talking about how AI is going to become part of our school district. And I guess overall, I could talk about some specific things, like the, in the high school, they're bringing in, I would say, I'd say, comingo?
Comingo.
Comingo?
Yeah.
And starting, they've been doing some training now, and they're going to try and unload it for onboard students in January. But it's going to be very limited. And one thing I like about is it's, we're being very deliberate, very slow, like, teachers are comfortable. We're doing a little bit at the high school, then it'll sort of filter down to the middle school, and then to the elementary school as, as teachers get more comfortable with it. Focusing, especially at the beginning, how teachers use AI, not students. And then, I think that was, so that's our main focus. And we're also developing goals for our BOSI's report in January. I think, can we make some progress on that?
Before?
Yeah. So, yeah, that's what we were working on today.
Yeah, we have a lot. Anybody else? Go around the table.
Well, thank you, everyone. And with that, I think we can move on to the superintendent's report.
Well, thank you. I'm pleased to welcome Amy Stager, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, to provide you with a UPK update. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. I'm excited to be able to share an update of our universal pre-K program here at Amherst. And of course, I want to express my gratitude. I just feel like it's such a privilege to work alongside Karen Redding, our incredible CBO directors, our teachers, our teaching assistants, the work they're doing educating our youngest tigers is really incredible. With that privilege, I feel a great responsibility as well. And I hope, sort of share that with you, that I recognize that it's their first experience in our district, and I don't take that responsibility lightly. So tonight's agenda, we are going to focus a little bit on family engagement nights, because I talked about it last year, but there's some fun things that's happened since last fall. And I want to make sure we highlight some program and curriculum updates, looking at the capital project addition, what's to come, and then our plan for the 26, '27 school year. Amherst UPK, night at, that wasn't supposed to happen. The museum. Okay. Well, anyways, we'll skip that slide, and then I'll show you the video after. But last fall, I explained to you that we were having our first ever UPK night at the museum downtown, at the Explore More, Explore More Museum. And that was like, to come in March. So I just wanted to make sure I highlighted it for you tonight. It was a highly successful event. Over 70 families came to experience, yes, and they could come with siblings and family members. We had two hours, the event, or the entire museum for itself. Now I'm going to skip two slides, and you're going to see a short clip. And luckily, Lori Susenko took it last year, and I kind of showed you why I don't work for Channel 4, because it was really on the spot. I kind of looked like a reporter, like, here we are. But it's going to show you a glimpse into what the event really looked like. Our third family engagement night of the school year. So in addition to our parents being invited into a we are here at the Explore More Children's Museum in downtown Buffalo for our Amherst UPK Night at the Museum. This is our third family engagement night of the school year. So in addition to our parents being invited into our classrooms, we have this entire museum rented for the evening for our families to get to know each other and have an opportunity to engage with each other in a setting that isn't the typical school environment. Tonight, we're hosting our family support center from Amherst, our Tigers Food Den, and our two elementary schools to assist our families in their transition into the Amherst Central School District K-12 experience by getting to know these community partners that are available to them and starting to support that transition to kindergarten at one of our elementary schools. When parents arrive through this door, they're going to receive a passport where they can visit each of those stations. And at the end, finish at their elementary school to get to know their principal and get a little prize. So as you saw in the video, it was so much more than just a museum rental. We hosted, Windermere and Smallwood, their building administrators were there with tables so families could come up. And they had handouts on what the transition to kindergarten would look like and the dates for the events. Our UPK teachers and assistants were there, mingling with their families and their students. The family support center and Tigers Food Den, our den food pantry were there, just letting them know what's available to them when they're in our school community. And of course, the photo booth to commemorate the experience. But one important detail I wanted to mention is last year, there was a question about the accessibility of the museum to our families. And I promised you I would give them directions on taking the metro rail. So the back of the flyer did have directions on how to go from University Station right to Canasac. And we actually had a lot of families do it, and they talked about it when they came. So I just wanted to make sure I highlighted that for you, that that was addressed. And at the end of every year, we give a family survey, like a program survey, and we ask specifically about the family engagement nights. And so many families talked about the night at the museum, just highlighting how unique it was and how parents got to get to know one another. Students got to see each other outside of the classroom and how it helped to build community. So in addition to that, I just wanted to highlight quickly our two fall events. We do a meet the teacher event that's very similar to the K-5 experience. But for UPK, we have staggered arrival times. So they come in small groups. Our pre-K families used to, or our pre-K teachers used to do home visits. And that has kind of gone away. So they've really been eager to have small group time with the students before they start. But they get to see the classroom, meet the teacher for the very first time, and that happens at the end of August. And then in October, instead of doing a traditional open house that you might think of in the school setting, we have our family night, which is a developmentally appropriate open house, where our pre-K students come with a guardian or a family member, and they actually get to experience that UPK learning space together. So those kids, their smiles when they're walking in that building, like, they're just lighting up to show their families what their school day is like. So their guardians get to see center-based learning, experience the centers with them that are self-directed by the students, and then a whole group ELA lesson. And I'm telling you, I was brought to tears in the two classrooms I was in. It was just, our teachers are incredible. And the families were like, this is amazing. Like, I never thought to do this at a center. And the teachers are really models for how we should be talking to our students and how we should be teaching them at that young age. And up in that little speech bubble from the program survey, one parent said, "UPK family night was a highlight of my year." So it's a really special night where they get to experience that all together. And then, hot off the press, the fourth and final family engagement night to come to UPK. This spring, we are going to host our first pre-K Picasso night. So it's going to be a young artist showcase. The date is TBD, but I couldn't help but share. So it'll be an art show of some of their artwork. There'll be make and take stations and stations for them to create a collaborative art piece. We're hoping to have it at a community center. We have a place in mind, it's just not.
I locked it in.
Oh, she locked it in! So Harlem Road Community Center is going to host that.
On May 11.
On May 11. I'll make sure to get you invitations. I think it's going to be awesome. We're hoping to have like, an ice cream truck in the playground and just really make it a community event. We're partnering with some of our art teachers in district to help us with the, with the organization. How do we map photos, you know, artwork correctly? And then some of the ideas for the artwork to highlight our themes. And then I just wanted to mention, I know I mentioned this last year too, but, but New York State Education Department has like, a family engagement brief. So I just want to show you that, like, these aren't just fun events that are happening at a museum, but they're really in, and I said, guidelines that we should be having family gatherings at a location where families can get to know each other. We should be enticing families who may not have had a positive school experience in a school setting to somewhere that's not that traditional school setting, for them to see themselves being involved and getting involved. We want them to feel connected to not only their classroom, and that's what that family night does, but to one another as well. And then the transition from the early childhood program to school age is just critical. So having Smallwood and Windermere present at the Night at the Museum just really helps to solidify some of this. So this is all rooted in what NICED says is best practices for family engagement at this developmental age. Okay, so now transitioning to some program and curriculum updates. Now it's fine, no. So we are going into our second year partnering with Petals, which is a nonprofit organization locally that stands for Positive Emotional Development and Learning Skills. So basically, their mission is to support the social emotional learning of early learners, right, in a pre-K program. So this is our second year partnering with them. The biggest part of what they do is help us implement the Second Step curriculum, which is a social emotional learning curriculum. We actually use it, K-5, but this one is specific for early learners, for pre-K. So they help us implement this. Last year, we purchased Second Step. We have it in every single classroom. But only four classrooms had this Petals partnership that came with coaching in the classroom, help with data collection. This year, and I think because they saw we were so committed to Second Step across the board, they've actually kind of adopted all eight of our classrooms. So all eight of our classrooms have a coach, her name's Starr, coming into their room for multiple hours in a month, and they can sort of make it however they want, where she observes and then gives tips. And then they'll help us with some sustainability planning. So when she leaves, do we have a trailblazer who's ready to take this on and support their colleagues? And Karen and I are, are working as well to learn that curriculum. So this was exciting when they said, hey, do all eight classrooms want? Because this is highly sought after in the region. I think Karen applied for two straight years. We didn't get it, didn't get it. And then last year, they said, then the demand is so high, we can only take on four, and now we have all eight. So that's exciting. In addition to that, we have something very new. This school year is a partnership with ECMC. Probably thinking, why are we partnering with a hospital? Okay, ECMC, this is a wing or a part of the organization that is actually a preschool special ed provider. So they provide like, occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech therapy to our kiddos who are three and four years old. So they work closely with Dr. Maria Otto and the county to provide these services. New this year, it's a very collaborative approach between Dr. Otto and our office. We were able to secure these two incredible women, Mary Cohen and Cara Polk. They are former CIT teachers, special education itinerant teachers. So they did this, this was their job. They came in and they worked with students who had CIT, special ed itinerant teacher on an IP. But now they're working in the capacity as like, behavior coaches and just in-class coaches. So it's a tier-one support. They've been in all of our classrooms to again, observe and say, okay, I think maybe this transition, right, could be a little smoother if you did this. Let me show you, let me try. And these two women have brought in, they've made Play-Doh at home. They've bought tools. They have been such an incredible resource to the program. They've made really close relationships with some of our newer teachers in the program. It has helped to support them at the tier-one level. And then also tier-two, meaning some kids. If some students are still struggling a little bit, or the teachers say like, this is tricky after, you know, nap time, I can't get the child to do this, they have been there to support. Really a minimal number of hours, so they're almost done. But I just needed to give them a shout out because really, they've worked so collaboratively with Karen, myself, the CBOs, the teachers, and have really been a positive contribution to the, to the program.
Will it be their next fall, too?
I hope so.
What would it, would it depend on?
I hope so. So we use grant funding through the special education department. So Dr. Otto really, she goes to regional meetings around preschool special ed. And some other districts have thought of this idea of, because sometimes they're coming to us and they've never been in school before. And if they need services, it takes a little bit of time to get them. So typically, September, October transition can be difficult. And the teachers is 18 to 1 to 1, right? So sometimes they need support. So some other districts have thought of this idea, and Dr. Otto knew about it, so she brought it into one of her grants. So, yeah, that's the plan. And the fall time seems to be the need. And then things start to, you know, fall into play. Yeah, good question. Okay, so Building Blocks is our pre-K MAP curriculum, and it actually has been for a very, very long time. But because our UPK grant is like, tiny, it's very difficult to buy like, new curriculum for all eight classrooms at once. So what was happening is we had some that were a 2013 edition, some that were a 2020 edition, some that were a 2025. So luckily, we received grant funding from Karen McMahon, Assemblywoman Karen McMahon, and the focus was on instruction. So we were able to horizontally align all eight classrooms with brand-new Building Blocks curriculum. So it was like Christmas. We have teacher manuals, all the manipulative kits that come with it, and the big books. So now our teachers all have the same materials, all have the same date, right, of release. And then on October 2nd, our first professional development day before they start teaching that, Karen Redding went to training to make sure everybody understood how to use the materials and how to use the program. That was really exciting as well. Okay, transitioning to the addition of Windermere. It's happening, it's coming next fall. The plan is to have four classrooms, four UPK classrooms there, servicing 72 students, also a gross motor room indoors, and an outdoor playground with a trike track. That'd be for a glimpse. Okay. So to orient you to the space, this is like, the Windermere first grade classroom. So the hall is going to extend. These colors have been changed, so don't stress about the, what color the floor will be, but there will be some wayfinding color that will bleed into the classrooms. But the four UPK classrooms will be right here, the four ends. But you'll notice that it's sort of a footprint of six rooms, right? So the four classrooms will be on the end. These two rooms in the middle, this room will be that indoor gross motor space. It's mandated by the state regulations that students have time for gross motor movement. And the Windermere gym is full from the second kids walk in till the second they leave. So expanding to have more students there will make it impossible to have that space. So this will be, you'll notice it's a little bit larger than these classrooms. It'll be a gross motor space. And then this spot right here is actually going to remain outdoors, right? But it still looks like the footprint of a classroom, and that's where the outdoor playground will be. And then you'll notice down here, there is a loop. This will be parking. Tried to show, Tara's parking. And then, this will be a one-way traffic for parent drop-off and pickup. That's what it should look like. We don't have great renderings, you know, like, inside the classrooms. We're meeting on Friday, so I couldn't show you that, but that's basically the footprint of what we're expecting. So then outside, look at this. We are going to have a playground just for our UPK classrooms. It's taken many meetings to get to the, the color options, the right tools, the right equipment. But this gray, these gray walls will be like, outdoor brick. So they'll be a lighter brick, and then it'll be fenced in. But you'll notice the outside is a trike track. With like, little stop signs and yield signs. So we'll have trunks that the students can go out and use. Give you a couple of renderings. You'll notice shapes on the ground with numbers. We did that intentionally up to the number nine. Our classrooms have 18 students in them, so if they're each assigned the same, they could have a buddy to line up and sort of like, a management tool. And there's one there. So we're very excited. We weren't sure a playground was going to happen, and it was quite the surprise and treat. Okay. So then moving into the plan for 26, '27 school year. Currently, this is what is happening right now in our UPK. We have, we're servicing 144 students in eight classrooms across four sites. So Windermere and Smallwood, our two elementary schools, have two classrooms, 36 students, they're both full-day programs. And then we have Amherst Nursery School, which is a half-day program. They only have one room. And then Amherst Community Church Childcare Center has three classrooms, all full day. Next year, the plan is to still service 144 students in eight classrooms, but to go across three sites. We are going to, are planning to increase Windermere by two classrooms. So that'll be an increase of two rooms, like we just saw. In that drawing, they have four. Smallwood Drive will retain two classrooms, full day. And then, we're working on the contract with Amherst Community Church Childcare Center right now. right now, but we are hoping or planning to have two classrooms there, so reducing one. And then that leaves Empress Nursery School. We have been meeting with them, and unfortunately, we'll no longer be partnering with them because they've been an incredible partner for like over 20 years. But they are, they don't have the licensing to host full-day programming. So we are really thrilled to have eight classrooms that will be all full day. Like, that's amazing, but it was very bittersweet to have that conversation with them because they are such a lovely partner in the community. So why full day, right? Why would we get rid of a half-day class? Why would we go full day? Well, the community demand has really shifted. It's really a full-day demand. We only have one family that chose half-day as their first choice for this current school year. And then we have four families that chose it as their second. We also have many families that have declined the half-day spot. We offer it, they say, no, thank you. Or we have families who took it, and are like, we really need full day, please. We have it on there, like, still want full day, still want full day. So there is a community demand for full day, and also the research clearly supports full-day programming for for UPK. So moving on to transportation, we will be discontinuing transportation in the 26, 27 school year for our UPK program. It's not required by the state law, right? This year, estimated, we'll be spending $227,000 to transport our students. It's not an allowable grant expense in our New York State grant that pays for our program, and it actually negatively impacts the aid that we receive. When we were planning the construction at Windermere, we actually had to cut costs, believe it or not, and we had to cut the bus loop, right? So that actually helped to reduce some of those costs. And in Area 1, there are 19 districts, 18 of them, not including us, and only five of them provide transportation. And then finally, looking forward to next year, we're excited. We have a tentative timeline already. Registration opens at the end of January, will close at the end of February, five weeks. Families will have two weeks to verify the documents in person. And then the random digital lottery will happen in March 18, and they'll be notified of the lottery results and then the placement. So that's all. What questions do you have?
How many, how many people apply? Like, of the 144, like, is it more?
Yeah, so two years ago, we had about 180, but this past. Good question.
Do we know what the cohort size is looking? I know the cohort sizes tend to fluctuate, so are we?
I know, I haven't looked at.
You could get a slide.
Yeah.
If you think about the three-year-olds that are in preschool right now, I mean, I know what I teach, the three-year-old classrooms are not full, so it might be smaller.
Oh, that's interesting. You heard it here. Well, we did have, two years ago, we had quite the increase in applicants, and last year it went back down to what's typically normal. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
So up next, we have our fund balance and reserves long-range plan presented by Acting Clerk and Assistant Superintendent, Mrs. Bezinski.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. So this is a working document. It's our first look at some decisions that we need to make this upcoming year with our reserves. So it's our long-range reserve plan. This document will identify all of our reserves, the current, the purposes for them, how we can fund them, what the rules are, our current levels, as well as where we want to or maybe can go with them. So this plan is really just to kind of keep us all on the same page, know what room we have in all of our reserves, what our options are. And then we'll refer back to this if needed as we go throughout the budget development process. And then at year end, when we're closing our books, we'll look at it again to make decisions if we're able to, any reserves we want to fund, if there's any excess monies available. So I won't read all of them. This is the same document that we've used the last couple of years, and I'll, we just update the information that's in them. But I will point out a couple of things that did change this year. So for our reserve for retirement contributions, no major changes. This one is for our employee retirement system for New York State. This is not our TRS, but it's our ERS funding. So we ended the year with just over a million dollars, and our funding level is approximately two years' worth of retirement payments. So if we had this reserve fully funded, it could take another $400,000 to a balance of just under 1.5 million. With that, we have a sub-fund in the retirement, and that is specifically to the teacher's retirement system. So that's for TRS. It was established just a few years ago, 2018, and there are some different rules with the TRS sub-fund. You are, we are limited to 2% per year with a maximum of 10% of the prior year TRS salaries. So we don't make you do those numbers, we do those calculations for you. Because we're more than five years out from the establishment, we are limited to the 2% a year because we have not fully funded it every year that we had the ability to. So our current balance is 1.7 million, and if it was fully funded, we could take another $600,000 in there. Accrued liability, reserve for employee benefit accrued liability. This is for payments that we make to our employees upon separation, retirement, retirement expenses. This year, this is one of the changes. This past year was the first implementation of GASB 101, which was a regulation that changed how we calculated our liability. So in the past, we would run a calculation of if everyone eligible to retire retired on the same this year, what would our costs be? So we would filter out everyone who was 55 or older, who had enough years of service, and we would run calculations, if they all left at the same time, how much would we need to pay? And it was, I don't know, two, between $2 and $3 million. GASB 101 required us to change that and recognize the expense of everyone who may retire someday. And we needed to put parameters on the potential or reasonableness that a person who was hired today, hired five years ago, hired 10 years ago, what the reasonableness is that they would retire from us and run that calculation with a percentage. So this year, our IBN, or not IBN, our liability for compi-asses increases increased to $10,400,000. So our reserve was calculated with a funding level of 100% of our accrued liability, because if it's liability, you should have 100% of that available. Will we ever need that? No, we will not need that. However, we have about $2 million in the reserve right now. It could, if it was 100% funded, take another $8.5 million-ish. But the benefit of having this particular reserve is we can use this money to appropriate to our budget in a year where we're anticipating a larger number of retirements if we have a gap in our budget, or if we feel we want to increase some of those payments. So when our teachers retire either during the year, June 30th, all those expenses for the retirement payments come out of that current year budget. So we want to make sure that we have enough available to cover that. If we know that we may have 10 or 12 teachers retiring, our current budget may or may not be enough to support that, so we would have the ability to appropriate from this reserve. Unemployment insurance, we haven't really made any changes with unemployment insurance. We are self-funded, so we pay actual claims from our separated employees who file with New York State. In the past, our average, our average payments were upwards of $250,000. In the last handful of years, those numbers have been much lower, which has been great. However, I wouldn't necessarily recommend reducing our levels of funding, because if they did increase again, it's nice to have that money available to offset some of those costs. We have just under $300,000. I'm not necessarily recommending increases, but not recommending decreases either. Our tax surcery reserve is in place to cover payments for any tax cert cases where refunds are due. We do calculate the liability annually based on open cases, and we have a large number of cases right now due to a previous reevaluation from the town. Normally, we have a handful, and our $124,000 is pretty close to where we want to be funding-wise. Once we get through this, these number of cases that we have right now, we believe that the 124 that we have in there will be sufficient to cover our expenses. The tax cert committee is working with the town to monitor our cases and get them closed as quickly as possible, but also with the minimum amount of impact to the district. So at this point, I'm not recommending making any changes to this one either, because I do think where we are right now will be temporary. Reserve for insurance is one of our new reserves that we established this past June, and this reserve is used to pay for any claims or judgments against the district. We funded it from excess fund balance at year end, and we ended the year with just under $1 million in this reserve. It's maxed, or I'm sorry, the maximum funding is 33% or five years of the annual budget. So last year, it would have been 3% of last year's budget. We didn't hit that. I'm sorry, 5%. 5% of next, this year's budget is $4 million. So that's how much we would be able to put into it this year if we chose to, which would give us a recommended level of just over $5 million. Reserve for liability, very similar. Again, established in June, also able to be used for payments for things that are claims against the district where we don't have other funds available for them. Lawsuits or claims is another. Oh, don't do that. So this one, again, funded from excess fund balance, and the limit was 3% of the current budget exclusive of any planned balance that was already authorized. So we ended the year with $2.3 million, which was 3% of our budget at that time. 3% of this year's budget is 2.4, which would give us a total available, if we chose, of $4.8 million. Capital reserve. We established this in 2021, and this is one of the reserves that needs to be authorized by the voters and has a maximum term limit. So it's $10 million for 10 years. Once 10 years comes and goes, this will automatically close, regardless of where we are in the funding. The other limit to capital reserve is that it can only take 10 million. So if you put two in, it can only take eight more. You can't put in two, use two, and still have 10 available. It can take 10, and that's it, regardless of how you're using it. So we have used some of this already for our current capital project. The current balance is $1.7 million, and we can take another $8 million in there because of what we've put in there. I'm sorry. How many could go in there? 6.2 is what is left to be an increase. We have used some of it. There is some in there. And then the asterisk here is based on the discussion we had at our last meeting. So I kind of italicized it because it's not truly yet part of our plan, but we wanted to be able to track it. So in May, we will ask the voters to increase our authorization for the capital project. The proposition number two will be $12.5 million. That's tax neutral to the voters. $5 million of that will be district funds, which would be a combination of this reserve and then $3.2 million of other available funds. So I put that in here kind of as a reminder, not necessarily a formal part of the plan yet. Those are all of our restricted reserves. And then in addition, we have four categories that aren't technically reserves, but we also want to track and be mindful of, and they are mostly all fund balance. So our unassigned fund balance is what we normally call the 4%. You have more than 4% of your fund balance, and that's 4% of next year's budget. So currently, we're at 3.2, which was, I think, like 3.9%. If we assume a 3% increase in next year's budget and assume a 4% on appropriated fund balance, we would increase that just under $100,000. Assigned fund balance is monies that we have available that we decide during budget development to appropriate to next year, or were current purchases that hadn't been paid yet that we roll into next year, may become restricted. So every year, we take $1 million of our fund balance and appropriate that into next year's budget. And then the $916,000 were encumbrances that were on POs at year end that, for whatever reason, we couldn't pay before we closed the books. It could be the items were ordered but not yet received. It could be that services had started or were scheduled to start but were not yet completed, so we didn't make the payments. So those monies roll into the current year so that last year's activities do not negatively affect this year's budget. So every year, we do plan on spending that money because it was on things that we had either ordered or are scheduled to do. Our debt service fund is another type of restricted fund balance, and these are monies that are received through our bond closings. So depending on who wins our bonds, sometimes they will give us premiums to help lower the overall interest rate. And then we use those funds within four years to help lower our tax cap in subsequent years and use those monies to pay down debt. So we use it a little bit at a time based on where our tax cap calculation is going to come in, trying to keep it level for our voters. So we ended with $121,000. That was used up right away because it was appropriated in last year's budget. And then this year, we received $634,000 when we closed our $48 million ban in August. So that money will sit there for this year, and then we'll decide how much, if any, we want to use towards next year's tax cap to try and keep it low and somewhat consistent. And then our capital project. So this is not a reserve. Again, this is just something that we're tracking. We promised the voters $3.2 million in our current project, and we wanted to track every year how we were making those payments. So we were able to achieve that promise in three years. We did fully fund that, but I added, again, in May, again, if that proposition is authorized by the voters, $5 million in cash will be from reserves and another $3.2 million in other available funds. So if needed, we will track that here so that we can make sure that we're keeping that in the forefront of our minds as we're budget planning. Does anybody have any questions? So this is our, just kind of a snapshot of where we are, what the explanation is of all our reserves. If there are any questions or changes that the board would like, we will present this to you for adoption in the January meeting, no, I'm sorry, the December meeting, December 9th, and then it won't be a draft anymore. And they'll put it on the website, and it'll just kind of be our guide moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Well, now, Brown, new business.
And I will need a motion to approve new business item D. I'll make a motion to approve new business item B. Any second?
Oh, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Okay, and we don't have any executive session, so do we have any follow-up action? Excellent, and I'll need a motion to adjourn. Make a motion to adjourn. Oh, no, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you.